I will call the Newport City Council into order for Monday, October 4th, 2021. City Council Room. All members of the City Council are present. Others include Jim Johnson, our Clerk Treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our City Manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2021. And I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vashon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on the minutes? In hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Nobody has signed up this evening, so we'll move right on. The next item is a presentation or a discussion about the Newport Development Funds. And we were going to have Joan Goldstein, the Commissioner, join us remotely, but I know she's not on. But we also have Tim Tierney, Ti- Tierney, I always say, and Dave Snedeker. Tim Tierney is the Director of Business Recruitment. Oh, Joan, Commissioner Goldstein is joining us now. Can you hear me okay? Let me just check something here. Let me just check my audio in case. Microwave microphone.
Joan Goldstein.
There. Hello, can you hear me okay?
Back here.
Okay, perfect. We were just getting to that agenda item on the City Council Agenda. And it was, as I was saying, it was a presentation on the Newport Development Funds. This is a fund that was set up as a result of the EB5 and Ariel Ferrios properties being sold. I just want to give a brief thing that since the whole thing broke, we've really moved forward in the city. A lot of positive things have happened in just five short years. Being all the grant funds that we received, all the projects we're working on. I mean, the big good example was the recreation path from Prati Beach and the Bloxly Farm, which was dedicated on a rainy Friday a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, a week ago this past Friday. The downtown transportation grant helped fund the intersection improvement. It's right outside the municipal building. So we haven't let the whole EB5 scandal basically slow us down. We're just continuing to move forward. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Joan Goldstein of the Vermont Department of Economic Development to just kind of give us a brief overview.
Great, thank you very much, Naomi Manette. Did everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Yeah, so as Naomi Manette has just referenced, this Economic Development Fund for Newport was the result of settlement with the state with the previous principles of projects at Jay and Burke. The idea was we were, the state was to get properties owned by those previous owners. And the state sold properties and with those proceeds, we're able to create this Economic Development Fund. We just launched it, I think it's about a month old. And the idea was to help spur additional investment into the city of Newport. And I believe tomorrow is the day where letters of intent are due so that we could see the demand for the projects, the demand for the funds. And I believe that our colleague Tim Tierney is here. He could talk a little bit more about the types of projects coming in and what we expect from this. We know that Newport has done a great job in planning and healing from this debacle. And this is just a mere small, relatively small offering to help spur and incentivize investment into the area. I don't know if I want to kick it off to Tim now or answer questions. I'll just, you know, this is just a general overview.
We probably can kick it off to Tim right now. He's basically waiting in the back.
Yes. Is it okay just to stay here or do you want me somewhere? It's up to you.
You're fine.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Tim Tierney from the Department of Economic Development. And Joan talked on the major points of the Newport Development Fund. And as you know, there are two grants. One is the Newport Development Grant Program, which is supposed to be more transformative project. Anywhere, the minimum request was about $50,000. And up from there, we didn't really set a cap on that. The actual funds totaled just over $1,500,000. So there is a cap. And then is also the Kiro, the Stagner Settlement Fund, which will total $100,000 at the end. But then the other grant is also the Discover Newport, which is more of a business competitive to expand or create something new here in the city of Newport. As you know, both grants, they are geographically maintained within the city of Newport boundaries as well. As of four o'clock today, the Discover Newport grant had eight total applicants. Five that were going to expand or improve their businesses and three new, looking to lease or buy a facility. And the total for those eight right now are about $140,000 requests. And again, and then we also have the Newport Development Grant Fund. And as of four o'clock today, we had five applicants and totaling $1,400,000 requests. And Joan is right, the deadline is tomorrow afternoon. And I also, I believe I sent Laura earlier some of the reviewer criteria that we're going to use. And this is, the reviewers are ACCD folks from Northern Vermont Development Association as well as the city of Newport will be the reviewing team on those. And what I sent was for the Newport Development Grant Fund, the criteria and how we're going to score to keep it fair and equitable throughout. So I don't know if everyone has a copy of that, they can look at and know if anyone has questions about that. They're basically, they stem directly from the application itself. And the reality is, is like, you know, this is really about job creation. We know that's something that's real important to Newport as well, especially in the Newport Development Grant Fund program. So a lot of the scoring does help those that are going to create a lot more jobs within five years. So, but you know, there's a lot of different criteria that we're looking at. And hopefully, we're going to send people through it. And we're also going to coach people, like where we'd like to see, you know, more details, more information. If they do go to the letters of intent, we pass them on to actually apply for a full grant. So we're trying to, you know, we want people to, you know, show what the real story is. And so everyone here can make a big difference with these programs. With the Discover Newport Grant Program, I think that's going to be more interesting. It's less about job creation than trying to make a difference right here in the city of Newport. And I think that's going to be reviewed, but it's going to be a little more subjective because everyone has different stories, whether they're expanding their business or creating a new one and whether or not it's going to create a lot of jobs. But is it going to, you know, make a difference for the community, so.
Questions? Oh, I was going to say, questions from any council members on this? I like the scoring. I just received it late today. I like the scoring, the way you have it broken down. I think it's very clear, concise. Helps, helps the people reviewing the process. I'm pretty sure about that. Does any council members have questions on this? As far as all the expansions and new jobs and new businesses, one of the criterias that have to be located in Newport City.
Correct.
I just want everyone to know that it's for Newport City. Businesses and expansion. Dave, did you want to add anything?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. For those of you that don't know, I'm Dave Snedeker. I'm the Director of the Northeastern Vermont Development Association. So we are the regional development corporation for the Northeast Kingdom area, the three counties and all the towns. We have existing relationships with many of the businesses that made the applicants and many businesses in the area in general. And we were happy to work with the state and the city to put this program together. We think there can be some transformative projects coming through and then also helping projects to help the downtown. And for those projects that don't get funded, we also are very in tune with other resources that might be available to help those businesses. So we're happy to be part of the review team and to assist businesses that may not make it through the Newport Development Fund or the Discover Newport Fund. So, thank you.
Out of there. I'm going to be a little off track, but are there ARPA funds available?
There.
For businesses? Now, I know there was some coming to the county. I mean, overall, right, that overseen by NVDA. Are those available for businesses?
So each municipality in the state of Vermont, with the exception of one, received ARPA funding, which can be used to support businesses that were impacted by COVID-19. We've not seen a lot of communities come up with solutions yet, but they certainly are eligible. Each community, the county, the county money is going back out to the municipalities. Vermont's delegation did a good job ensuring that the towns get more money than they would normally, so.
Oh, okay.
There's also funds available in municipalities for water, wastewater projects. I don't know, you've all been briefed on the different buckets of ARPA funding, but I know the agency just released last week the Capital Investment Fund for businesses and nonprofits. That can be found on our website, accd.ramond.gov. And we will soon be launching the Brown Fields Program, which is to clean up contaminated properties. Not ARPA funded, but general fund funded, but still a new expanded program.
Yes, question?
Yep, go ahead, Melissa.
Just for my clarification, the Discover Newport Development Grants, is it a two-step process? It's like the intent, what you want to do is do on the fifth, and then after that, you probably will work with folks to tune up what they're doing, and then the actual application takes place?
That is correct. So I think by the end of next week, we will let people know whether or not they are, we're asking moving them forward for a full application. And then it's another month or so to get that application ready as well. Information is more, it's almost, it's more like some intensive, a lot of intent.
Kind of a screening.
Not that too. But the one thing that came up too is the fact that if a lot of these monies are, or not, the quality of applicants aren't there, we're thinking of, you know, with the committees, doing a round two. Just to see if there's, because we want this, you know, this money to actually impact the community in a positive way.
And what has to do the first step, which is the intent piece? You can't like skip that part and just go to part two?
No.
Okay. Yep, okay, thank you.
That's the same for the Newport Development Fund, which is the larger part of money. And obviously, when we set this program up, we had the Main Street property and the former Bogner property in mind. Those were definitely impacted by the EB5. So that's why we have a larger part of money. But even with the money available, the projects on those properties are going to take a lot more money than what this fund has available. So that's why we're also happy to help.
Okay, good, thank you.
I just lost my train of thought on a question. Oh, these, both grants that the businesses applying for, is there percent that they have to come up with? Like, I mean, like matches or, I call it a grant match. Like in the city, we have to come up with matches. Do they have to come up with a percent?
You know, the Newport, the Newport Development Grant Fund, you have to have a 10% equity, but you also need to have, it's 51%, or basically 49% will be paid by the grant fund. So you need to have matching funds above 50%.
Okay, no, that's, that means they have skin in the game.
Correct.
And that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, having skin in the game. Other questions for anyone on this?
Can I ask one?
Yep, go ahead.
Is this money going to be available as, I mean, as long as there's applications that qualify, this money's going to be available up to $1.5 million?
I mean, the intent right now is, I mean, you know, we're receiving applications as we speak. A couple just came in, right, the deadlines tomorrow. So I think if there's money left over, I bet the committee, which will decide, I believe they will have another round of applications to make sure this money is in Newport City.
Yeah, but the whole 1.5 is for Newport City, am I correct?
That is, that is what I have been told.
I hope this keeps going on until it's all gone.
It's going to, we're going to try to, yes. And it might be oversubscribed by tomorrow, so we'll see. I think we're going to have a good shot on that. Yes, it's all completely, and I want to say it's $1,529,229.72 cents, something like that, so.
Because originally, some of the, I know originally the properties that were being sold, the money was going to be for Orleans County. And then when the governor was here at the, he kind of surprised everybody when he said, "No, it's going to be for Newport only." Because even some of his own people didn't know that. And they looked at me and go, "Oh." And I said, "Yeah, I'm happy about that." And so, but yeah, they announced that it was just going to be all for Newport, yeah.
My only reason for asking that, because Newport's the one holding the bag here. Literally. My, to me, all that money should be going here.
And it's been set up, the Newport Development Fund is just for the city of Newport. So the entirety of the funds, so.
Chris, did you have a question?
A couple, Mr. Mayor. Did I hear the term ARPA fund? I couldn't quite catch that first word.
ARPA.
No, 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 this is nothing with ARPA. I just happened to get sidetracked about available ARPA funds. This is a separate Newport Development Fund and the, what's the other name? Discover Newport Fund.
Yes.
Those are the name of the two funds.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. And when you say the property is sold, I'm assuming you mean the Bogner property?
No, that has not been sold.
No, you're talking about the monies from the?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'll let Tim explain it, but it was the Ferrios property.
So the Kiro, he had, he had properties in Burke and Orleans and other places. And the settlement with him, and I believe Joan might have it in front of her. The settlement was when those properties were sold. And I know there was Darling Hill in Burke and Lynderville. I believe there's a farm in Coventry and some other properties. When that was sold, the proceeds from that basically went into this Newport Development Fund through a settlement with the state, so.
Mr. Mayor, do you know how much money was the, the properties totaled?
$1,550,000, $1,500,000, yeah.
$1,500,000.
And change.
Yeah.
Okay, so the property, the Bogner property, and of course, the one across the street has not been sold yet.
That's nothing to do with this.
Separate.
They're separate.
Okay, just want to make sure that's straight on my head.
Yep.
Does the size of the business apply to this? They have to have so many employees that?
No.
Here?
Okay.
No. Because there's a lot of smalls here that got hurt really bad.
Yeah, and therefore, that's why the two, the two grants, I think, are ones for smaller businesses.
There's a lot of smalls that may not be able to meet all these qualifications. So I hope something's available for them.
Other questions or comments from any council member or anyone?
Yeah, I just, I think, I can't remember already, but it's businesses. It's not not-for-profits and things like that. Is it business?
It's business and nonprofits can apply to the, to, to the both funds. I think the big thing we put in there was that we did not want to fund any planning right now. We wanted like real results. So it wasn't for to do more continued plans. So yes, but nonprofits do qualify.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have a copy of the list that Tim gave you of that could?
Actually, you can have mine. You can just ignore the little bit of writing, which is my hand scratch.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Goldstein, did you want to add anything?
No, I think I followed along. Basically, if we don't get enough applications, we'll do another round.
That's perfect.
Okay?
Okay. Well, I appreciate you joining us this evening via remote. And I appreciate you coming, Dave coming. They just kind of help explain to the council a little bit of a background and to the media in that way. Hopefully, we get some more good applicants. Because the time is short by the time they find out tomorrow, but hopefully, there'll be some more good applicants, so. Thank you.
And any questions here, feel free to reach out on that joan.goldstein@ramond.gov. I'm happy to answer anything.
Perfect. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for setting this up.
Oops. There. Okay. We don't want that, no. I'm just going to leave because no one's on. All right. I could have put that up on my screen. Oh, well. All right. All right, now we'll move on. The next item is the CDBG Grant Application Resolution regarding the Bogner Development. As the council knows, Trac Incorporated is looking to expand their operations up at the Bogner facility. They had applied for a round of CDBG funds, but they didn't, maybe Dave could explain it more than I can. They didn't, they weren't chosen, but they were urged to definitely apply this next round.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Yes, the city of Newport applied back in June for a CDBG grant that would be subgranted to the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, who would ready the Bogner building for the expansion of Trac Inc. and a couple of other businesses. It was a super competitive round. We did not get funded, but we were encouraged to come back for the November round. So that's what this is about. So we have to do a new resolution to resubmit.
Did they change a few things in the initial application?
Yep, we have a better handle on the job numbers. We have a better handle on the remediation that's needed at the property.
Great. Questions from council members? Then we would need a motion to approve the resolution. I don't think I need to read the entire resolution. So we would need a motion.
So I'll move to approve the resolution for the VCDP Grant Application Authority.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, made by Ms. Pedersen, second by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We all have to sign this.
Mr. Mayor, is there a copy of the resolution on the website or?
There is, perfect. We'll let Joan witness it. I need to witness it, so Joan can witness it.
Was it written up there?
I just had them with the copy, it's super quick.
So that they can have the original for the, after the grant.
I'll make sure that everybody gets it, make it good, have a copy.
Just so everyone knows, this total project is estimated at $2.78 million up at the Bogner facility. So Dave, I know, she's doing that, what has to be remediated? I thought pretty much everything had been up there.
Actually, they found an underground fuel, fuel tank at the property. So there's going to be, excuse me, need to be some more soil testing.
Oh, yeah.
There was also some staining on the interior floor, which will have to be investigated as well.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, it was asbestos and mold because the building's been unheated for a few years. There was some asbestos in the mastic of the tile on the upstairs that all came loose, so.
Oh, okay, I was just curious. Now, older buildings have that. You know fuel tanks. You know asbestos. Good, very good. Thank you again, and good luck with that application.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have new business. Mr. Johnson?
I don't know if you were over, it's new for this year. Had a lot of calls, the tax is going out tomorrow. Everybody will be getting one.
Okay. Mr. Abenow, anything new?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have anything. Anything new?
No.
New business? Or anything new?
I do. You know that we've been doing a lot more with the Recreation Department while we're going through our transition. And we want to let you know that we will be moving forward with the Parmalo Park Pumpkin Palooza. And it's scheduled to pick up pumpkins for those who want to have pumpkins that Robert grew. Will be on a Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 at Gardner Park near the wastewater treatment. And then the actual Palooza itself will be the following Saturday, which is October 23rd. And that's where we'll like the pumpkins and judge the pumpkins. And hopefully, it'll be very cute. And there's prizes of downtown dollars. There's about, there's, I think, 10 or 11 different opportunities to win downtown dollars. And there's lots of age groups, from little kids all the way up to young adults. And it should be very adorable. So we're going to start our public relations campaign this week. You'll see stuff on Facebook and on the media.
They'll be lit in Railroad Square?
Yeah, Parmalo Park.
It's lush, yeah, it was beautiful. It was brilliant to see them all, nice.
So don't be surprised if some of you get a request to be a pumpkin judge.
Speaking of that, you just triggered my memory on new business. The Fall Festival went very well. I mean, I was one of the judges on the scarecrows, and that was very difficult. Jim was a judge, Chris was a judge. It was extremely difficult judging the scarecrows.
It was great.
But it worked out well, and you couldn't have asked for a nicer day. I mean, it was a picture-perfect day for it.
And the photo contest was equally as difficult to judge. The photos were beautiful that were submitted. So we're really tickled that that happened.
It looked like it was a good turnout.
I think it was. I know the Senior Center made $470,000 on their bake sale. And I know that, who was it that took first for the chili? I just can't remember. The police took first for the chili. And Public Works came in second. And who was the other? There was a tie, oh, the Moo Radio was the tie for second place, I think.
And the chili.
It was great.
Yeah, it was good. It was a good day.
We're really, very tickled that that came out. And jumping right into the Pumpkin Palooza. And then, of course, we'll move into planning the Parmalo Party because they have expressed an interest in funding that again for this year. With the Delta variant, I don't know what exactly it's going to look like yet. Last year, what the Rec Department did was end up taking goodie bags to various homes. I think a lot of us participated in that. It was great. I don't know if that's what it's going to look like yet, but I'll definitely keep you posted. I think a lot's going to depend on what the numbers for the Delta variant look like. So, but we're moving in that direction. That's the other reason why we're sticking with the Pumpkin Palooza, because it's completely outside. So hopefully, that'll be safe. We're encouraging masks. We are choosing to not offer Play World this fall, which normally, that's a program that starts in October. But it's too scary and dangerous for us as far as we're concerned because those are little children, they're not eligible to be vaccinated, and we just don't want to set up an environment where we could cause a problem. We do intend to continue with pickleball because those are people who can be vaccinated. They're generally for... They're generally, for our part, they're very well aware of the rules. So I feel like right now, given the information that we have, that's the best decision we can make. So that's my new business, look for signs for Pumpkin Palooza.
Okay.
We're picking those pumpkins up this coming Saturday?
The 16th.
16th.
Yep.
And then there's things that we can invest in.
Yes, and then they'll be lit through Halloween.
Okay. Any other, other new business?
Because I was a major contributor to the Senior Center bake sale. To my husband's delight.
I think Jim and I were the biggest contributors.
We must have spent $400,000 or $470,000.
Well, good, it makes me feel a little better then.
That was awesome, it was great.
Okay, old business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Charbonneau? Mr. Wilson?
I've got one thing on it. Two years ago, we had the Centennial.
Three.
Three years ago.
Yeah.
I had mentioned then that I'd be surprised what some paint could do for the bridge going over into Gardner Park. Three years has gone by, and if you look at that bridge, I'm not a structural engineer, but if we trying to beautify the city, the bridge is deteriorating. I don't, do we own the bridge or is it? It's a new one? We ought to take a look at that bridge and see if we can start, stuff is starting to fall off the, the bridge itself. We ought to at least patch it up and paint it.
It's a very good possibility that that will be included in the waterfront intersection. And I'll mention it to Tom as well.
And the last thing I mentioned, I know we did the paving, it was a great job, but Tom did mention it. Central Street, which is probably one of the worst in the city, he was going to do a super good patch job on it. Is that still going to happen? Because I've heard rumors of the contrary, what with someone buying up all the properties on that street.
I'll ask him.
Thank you.
I don't, okay, I don't have anything. Oh, Jim, any old business?
No.
Mr. Nashon?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, the next item, we have, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. And now we need an executive session to discuss the evaluation of a public officer or employee under provisions of Title I, Section 313.